I can almost 100% assure you that you will be successful. When you read Habeka, two and two, and it says, get the vision and write it down, do a tarry for a while, wait on it for it shall surely come to pass. If you break that down, it really comes down to four things. I call them the four Ds of success, all right? So I want you to follow me with this. So the first D in the four Ds of success is destination. Young people, say destination. Say destination. Destination is very simple. It just means where are you going? Where are you going? And you got to figure that out. Where are you going? Because we're all going somewhere, right? There is no stagnant, you know? We all don't just stand in one place. We're all going somewhere. And if you don't figure out destination, you will be like a leaf that's caught up in the wind, right? The wind blows and it goes left, and then it blows again and it goes right, and then it blows again and it goes left. And so destination really, really helps you figure out where you're going. My family and I, we often take trips. And life is certainly a journey. And without destination, if you just got in your car, if you took I-10, you would go to Miami. If you took I-10 the other way, you'd go to LA. You can get on 95 and go to New York. And so all of these roads lead somewhere. But without destination, you don't know where you're gonna end up at. So I made up in my mind a long time ago that I was gonna play in the NFL. That was my dream. That's what I wanted to do. And so everything that I did in my life was geared towards going to the NFL, right? That's how I carried myself. That's how I acted. Everybody knew my destination. When you saw me, I was walking around with a football. When you saw me, obviously, I knew that to go to the NFL, you had to go to college. So when you saw me, you saw a football in one hand and books in the other hand. Because that's what destination looks like. Everybody knows when me and my family go and we get ready to go on our trip, they know we going to Miami, or we going to New York, or we going to Atlanta. People should know your destination, where you are going. And that's something that you don't have to wait late in life to do. You can decide your destination right now. Obviously, our ultimate destination is heaven, right? That's where we're all striving to get to. And again, that's something that's very easy to do. You just confess and be baptized, et cetera, et cetera, and you can get to heaven, right? The same with life. Make a decision about where you are going. So say destination. I gotta figure out my destination. And secondly, the next D is direction. Say direction. I told you that me and my family, we take these trips. And I'm so thankful that now we have direction and we got GPS. Because when I was a young man, I had to look at the roadmap and try to figure out, go this way and turn and figure that out. And now I just pull out my GPS and it'll take me there. Well, the same for you. You gotta figure out, once you know where you're going, then you gotta figure out how you're gonna get there, right? How are you going to get where you're going? And there's this misnomer about opposites attract, right? That's what they say because it's a popular cliche. But the fact is, you gotta hang out with people who going where you going, right? You gotta get around people who are trying to achieve the same things that you achieved. When I was a young man, I was a football player, so I hung around with football players, right? I didn't hang around with too many track guys. I didn't hang around with video game people. I hung around with the guys who played football because I wanted to learn. The people that I read about were football players. The people that I admired were football players. And so you guys gotta find out where you're going and what it takes to get there. And what it takes to get there is very, very simple. You guys have all of these things at your fingertips. I was just exposed to AI a couple of weeks ago. Literally, you can just write in a word and AI will take it from there and give you everything that you need to know, right? And so for me, direction is really figuring out where you wanna go. What does that look like? If you say you wanna be a doctor, then you should be reading about doctors and hanging out with people with doctors and talking to your parents about going up to the hospital so you can walk around and listen and hear. But there are some things that you gotta figure out as you're going, right? You gotta figure out, who are you? Do you have the skills? Like these people, I see these all the time. Kids will come up to me and say, Dr. Brown, I wanna play in the NFL. And I'm like, bet, cool. And then I said, well, let me see your grades. And then they show me this. I look at their grades and they got Fs. And I'm saying, how can you wanna go to the NFL and you can't get in college that way? So you gotta make sure that your direction is directed by who you are and what you are doing. So say direction. Now, I'm gonna give you this other D, and it's really, really important. This is probably the most important one. And this is certainly why we're here today. And the next D is distractions. Say distractions. Say distractions. That's where this issue of drugs come in, right? I am telling you that distractions come in all shapes, form, and fashions, right? So let me just say this to you. Your boyfriend and your girlfriend can be a distraction. Your family can be a distraction. Your teachers can be distractions. If you don't put things in proper perspective, they will turn into distractions. I can tell you, I went to Alabama State University and I had a ball in college, man. I mean, I had an absolute ball at an HBCU. I mean, I had this thing about, I was from Miami, so I had my homeboys from Miami. I was in a fraternity, so I had my fraternity brothers. I played football, I school, church, and all of this stuff, right? And by the way, at that time, I probably had five or six girlfriends as well, right? So that was my life, right? And you have all of these things going on. But the fact is, my priorities were intact. I made sure that on Sunday and Wednesday night, I was going to church. That was a fact. On Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I don't care what was going on, how late I stayed at the club, how late I got up, no matter what time I came in, I was going to class every single day. And then finally, I was gonna make sure that football was intact. And so I did my best when I was in college to avoid those distractions. I am telling you that the biggest distraction in our society now is drugs. There is no such thing as a recreational drug. There's no such thing as a good time drug. There's none of that. We all know that drugs are gateways. You say, well, I'm just gonna smoke a little weed, and you're headed down a very, very bad road. You say, I'm gonna just pop a little pill and I'm heading down a very, very bad road. You say, I'm gonna just drink a little of this, and you're heading down a very, very bad road. There is no appropriate drug to be taken. And you gotta know that right now. And in our society, obviously, it's everywhere, right? I wonder what's gonna happen in our society. I was in New Orleans not too long ago and my wife and we walked down Bourbon Street. And I mean, all I smelled was weed. I mean, it's just permeating. And while the people who are on those drugs at that time think they're having a good time, in the morning, you gotta wake up. And drugs are particularly used for people to escape something. They're trying to hide something. And so people, when they say, well, I just wanna get high, that's not it. They're getting high because they're trying to hide from something, run from something, put something in the back of their minds. You don't have to do that. You just avoid distractions. You stay on the right path and God is gonna take care of all that stuff. Life is very difficult. There's no doubt about that. But because you are who you are, you know who you know, right? You don't have to worry about trying to find a quick fix to fix those things. God is gonna take care of that. So you have to do everything you can to avoid distractions. I can tell you this, that there is no person that's in prison. When I talked to my, one of my jobs a while ago was when kids got in trouble, young kids 16 and up, they did something that would be considered a major crime. I would have to go to the court. And go to the court, and the court would hire me to go talk to these people and see, should they be tried as an adult from a psychological perspective, right? Did they have the mental capacity to be tried as an adult? And the one thing that I found, every time I went into jail to meet some young man or some young woman and talk to them and kind of figure out their story, none of them said, I grew up wanting to come to prison. You go talk to people that's living under bridges, they don't say, you know, I grew up wanting to do this. If you ask a kid when he grow, what you wanna be when you grow up, nobody says, I wanna go to prison. Nobody says, I wanna be poor. Nobody, everybody says, I wanna be something great. Well, I can just tell you right now how you end up under bridge, how you go to prison, how you have a bad, bad life, and that's allowing distractions to come in. And so, young people, you gotta afford distractions. And then, so say distractions. And then finally, the last D of this is determination. Say determination. I am telling you that your life is gonna have some difficulties. There's gonna be some ups, some downs, some ins, some outs. But you have to stay determined. I'll tell you a quick story. When I was in college, I was ranked the number 16 receiver in the nation at an HBCU. So that was a big deal, being at Alabama State University and ranked in the nation as a receiver. And we were playing down in Mississippi. I run a route, quarterback throws me the ball. I catch the ball and bam, I get hit in my left knee. When they took me to the sideline, they grabbed my left knee. And they, the doctor grabbed it and he took it and he pulled my knee all the way over to the right side. And I saw this and my knee looked like an L, right? And I looked at that and I started crying and all of this stuff. And they took me to the hospital in Mississippi, in the country of Mississippi. They took me to a fire station because there was a doctor there. And then we flew back to Alabama. I went to one doctor in Alabama. He said, your knee is too bad. We gotta go to another doctor. And then they sent me up to Birmingham, Alabama, where Dr. James Andrews, who is the NFL's orthopedic surgeon, had to do my knee. And so I go in, he does my surgery, and he tells me, you're not gonna play football anymore. You had a great, you know, we fixed it. In about four or five years, you'll be able to play a pickup game, a football, a basketball. You'll still be recreational. You'll have a life. I look at him and I say, I'm playing football. I called my dad, tell my dad, hey, man, this is what the doctor said. My dad said, don't worry about football. We sent you to school to get education. And I told my dad, I'm playing football. The doctor came back in my room and said, look, I really want you to get this because I see this with too many guys. They're going through depression, they go through all of this. You gotta accept right now, today, that your career is over. You had a good run at it, and you're not gonna play football again. And I told him, I'm playing football again. And I tell you all of that because six months later, I was playing football. And that is, doesn't have anything to do with me as a human being. It has everything to do with, I trust God and I stay determined. And I am telling you, young people, that the way that you become successful is you know your destination. You know where you're going. You find out how to get there. You avoid distractions and you stay determined, and God will bless you. Thank you very, very much for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Before you go, just a small token of our appreciation for doing this. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. So now we're going to go ahead and get started with our breakout sessions. We are so very fortunate to have some professionals that are gonna be here to give you guys some information about the topic of drugs and alcohol use amongst you guys, amongst people your age. So as you guys are heading to your breakout sessions, remember what Dr. Brown said. Remember that you have a destination. And to get to that destination, you have to know the direction, right? And avoid distractions. He's talked about how there are gonna be different distractions that try to come your way. Even as you guys are in your breakout sessions, there will be people that will try to distract you from getting the information that you need. So make sure you don't sit by those distractions as you are in your breakout session, right? And always remember to be determined, okay?
Before we do that, I'd like to bring a very important person who most of you know. To the front, Walter, come this way. Give him a hand as he comes. We have the right Reverend Walter August III here today, and he is representing Crossroads Mentoring. And they have a table over there to the right. Crossroads is a mentoring program for students. And I'll let Walter tell you a little bit more about it.
All right, good morning, everyone. Of course, as Reverend Ford, thank you, mentioned, I am Walter August III. I am our Minister of Online Ministry here at One Church at Bethel's Family, as well as a Program Coordinator for Crossroads Mentoring. Crossroads Mentoring was birthed out of a partnership between Bethel's Global Reach and the Houston Independent School District. And the reason why Crossroads Mentoring happened to come into play is because we are facing a lot of challenges with our youth and adolescents today. We all are aware, of course, part of the reason why we're here is the drug abuse, misuse, that type of stuff. Also, the misguided, the misdirection. Of course, the influence of peers and, of course, culture in society. And so one of the things that we're aiming to do is we're aiming to change that. I, by a show of hands, how many of us in here have had a mentor? Have you had a mentor? Just raise your hand. Okay. Mentors are invaluable in the lives of even adults. And so one of the things that we are striving to do is we're striving to place young adults or youth, students, with mentors, those who will be able to guide and to assist and to provide encouragement as they are on this journey called life. Because we all can agree that life has its own set of challenges, right? And just think about, for those of us that may have not had mentors, if we would've had a mentor, potentially, some of the different choices and decisions we could've made in life, amen, that could've been a tremendous blessing to us. So one of the things that we're asking for is for all of those students who are in grades 6 through 12, all right? Now, this is a partnership between BGR and the Houston Independent School District, but we are not restrictive, okay? So you don't have to be in the Houston Independent School District to benefit from our services. We offer one-on-one mentoring, group mentoring, and also some other opportunities, okay? So one of the things that we'd love for you to do is to come by our table, get registered and signed up. Also, for those of you that are in here, that are in the position to be a mentor, when I say in the position to be a mentor, what I am saying is you are an adult, which means you graduated from high school, potentially college, maybe have started your career in life already. And you are willing to commit just one hour of your time per week to assist a student in guiding their decisions and encouraging him and also providing additional support to them in this journey that they are on. Again, I thank you for your time this morning. I'll be at the table over here. I'd love for you to come by and I can share some things, some more things that we have with you. And then also, for those of you who, I'm trying to see here. Do I have somebody in here yet? No, no, I don't have them in here. But for those of you that are here today, please come by and see us, okay? Thank you so much for this, this time. Who am I giving the mic to now? All right, Caitlin, here you go.
That's God. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Yeah, that's it, Willie, have six. Is the black Michael? Hello? I have it, I'm sorry. All right, so we've come to the part in our town hall meeting where we have asked our experts to kind of give you all some more insight on some of the questions that you guys actually submitted relating to teenagers and drug and alcohol use and abuse. So as mentioned earlier, one of the things that the Youth Council here at the Church at Bethel's Family is working on is a project, a service project on how to create drug-free communities, how to create drug-free schools, and what can we ask of our educators, our principals, our lawmakers, our law enforcement officers, our judges, how they can help our communities, how they can keep you all safe, right? So Aubrey has our first question, which is gonna be posed to the entire panel. Oh, yes.
So first, we're gonna have them introduce themselves. We can start with me and Aubrey. We're the moderators for today. So I'm Caitlin. I am a junior at Travis High School.
I'm Aubrey. I'm a senior at Bel Air High School. And then we can start from right here.
My name is Officer Clifton. I'm with the Houston Police Department. Been on the Police Department for 15 years. Started the academy. I started off two years patrol in the southwest community. From there, I went to the tactical unit. And now I'm currently working in juvenile intake and missing persons.
You want me to introduce myself? Officer Dudley Bro, Houston Police Department, 26-year vet. Been around a little bit, trained out here in Gessner area. I'm a traffic enforcement officer. So if I see you, I will get you. I write all kinds of tickets. I don't play. I'll be nice to you, but I don't play. So pay the law, do what you're supposed to do out there on the streets, because I'll be out there.
Natalia Cornelio. I'm a criminal district court judge here since January 1st of 2021. And before that, I was a lawyer since 2006, practicing as a public defender and a civil rights lawyer. Nice to meet y'all.
Good morning. My name is Judge Lori Chambers Gray. I'm judge of the 262nd Criminal District Court in Harris County since January 1st, 2019. Before that, I was a criminal defense lawyer for 29 years. So I've got a lot of experience. And if you've got some questions, we got answers. Good to be here.
Is it still morning? Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Dorsey, for inviting me. My name's Maria T. Jackson. And my background is, is that in the late 80s and early 90s, I taught youth offenders, at-risk youth in Sunnyside at Jesse Jackson Academy. And then I practiced civil law. Then I was elected as judge of the 339th Criminal District Court in 2008, when a Democrat hadn't been elected in 20 years here in Harris County. I served as your judge for almost 12 years. And now I work for the Houston Police Department. And I'm with these great HPD officers. And I supervise the Internal Affairs Division cases for the legal department. And I'm honored to be here.
Good morning, everyone. Is this a morning? Yep. Good morning, everyone. My name is Judge Catherine Thomas, and I am the Presiding Judge of the 184th Criminal District Court. I'm happy to be here. Before I took the bench in January of this year, I was a prosecutor. I was a homicide prosecutor with the Harris County District Attorney's Office. So if you have any questions, hopefully I have some answers. Nice meeting you all.
Hi, I'm Melissa Marie Morris. I am the Presiding Judge of the 263rd District Court. In January, y'all made me, y'all's Presiding Judge, so I appreciate that. I have been on the bench less than a year. But prior to that, I was a criminal defense attorney for 16 years. And so I handled all the type of cases that are in front of me now. And I love that I'm here to answer your questions. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you for voting Melissa Marie for 263.
Well, good morning. I'm Monica Riley, Mountain Moving Monica. I'm the City Councilwoman for the City of Missouri City. I grew up in the very area that I serve in. Been there 47 years in District A. I'm honored to be here. Thank you to Pastor August for his vision in this church. And thank you so much to Dr. Dorsey for the gracious invitation that I was more than willing to accept. I've been an advocate in the community for youth mentorship, making sure that we have culturally diverse communities, as well as mentoring over 700 students in my 26-year career of volunteerism. I've been serving on city council for about 18 months now, but I'm no stranger to civil service and public service. Always in the community. I'm looking forward to y'all's questions. Ask tough questions because we are here to answer them. Parents, I'm gonna tell you one thing before I close. Do not let up on your kids. Always give them positive reinforcement. Give them expectations, and then you hold them to those expectations. And that's what's gonna produce better communities for our kids.
She is one of my former students from Thurgood Marshall High School, class of 2010, and she didn't play. She held me accountable one day, and I was like, what? And then afterwards, I was like, I'm glad she did that because it helped me as a teacher. Well, good morning. My name is Angela Lindbrink. As you know, I'm a member here at Bethel. I am a licensed professional supervisor. I'm a counselor, a therapist in a group practice called Clear Hope Counseling and Wellness in the Sugarland location, 10 minutes from Bethel. We service Fort Bend ISD, Pasadena ISD, La Porte, Humboldt, and Tomball. I go into several schools in the districts. Prior to that, as I was saying before, I'm a former secondary educator. Missouri City Middle School was where I began. Then I follow my children. Yes, I follow those kids to Thurgood Marshall because I had a heart for them. I have a heart for kids. I do. I am a trauma-informed therapist. What that means is that when I'm looking at behavior, I'm looking at it through the lens of trauma. Not what's wrong with you, but what's happened to you. So hopefully, I can answer any of the questions you may have today.
Hello, my name is Santos Ramirez, and I am a licensed drug counselor who has worked in public schools for close to 30 years. Also worked with juvenile probation for about three years. I do a lot of counseling in the schools. Well, I'm retiring. I've been doing it all those years. Really enjoyed working with teenagers and parents and school staff and other professionals all these years. But I'm here today, I want to thank the church for inviting, inviting me over here today. I think that this drug problem out there in society is big right now. It's dangerous. I've been doing this for a long time, and I have not seen what I'm seeing on the streets right now, the fentanyl crisis and the drugs that are out there right now. So right now, it's very important, parents, and this panel up here that we keep up with what's going on right now. Everybody work together because this is a big problem. It's affecting society, affecting our kids in the schools. So I'm here today. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer your questions. Thank you very much.
All right, so our Youth Council has actually been doing some research. And one thing that they did was they handed out a survey. And so they actually saw some numbers of students engaging, so early on, even at the middle school level, engaging in drugs and alcohol. So one of our students actually has our first question for the entire panel. It's, why do you believe that teens find drugs so appealing? And what do you think your role is in decreasing some of that appeal?
I'll take that. I think one of the, I'm a mom of seven kids. So I have a little bit of experience in what kids can go through. They're all, all girls. And one of the things is kids look for outlets. They look for acceptance. As youth, you look for ways to be included and what's appealing out there. Everybody wants to be popular. Everybody wants to be on the in-crowd. And sometimes that's not quite the best way to approach. Being the center of attention is not always the best thing because sometimes it can lead you into trouble. It can lead you into directions that you didn't really think that you were gonna fall into. One of the things that I talked with my daughters early on when they were in elementary is don't put things in your body that your body may not respond to the right way. Because if you take in a chemical substance like a drug, even marijuana... if you take in a chemical substance, like a drug, even marijuana, fentanyl, cocaine, any of that, guess what? You don't really know how your body's going to respond, and your body may say, "Ooh, I really like this. This tastes so good." Kind of like sugar, because I'm addicted to sugar. I'm working on that at 52. But, you know, when you put things in your body, your body will say, "Ooh, I really like that." But if it's something bad that you put into your body, and your body responds and says it really likes that, guess what? You're going to want it again, and again, and again, and then you won't be able to stop. So one of the biggest things is you, as young people, you have to be able to be ready to make those tough decisions in the moment, and saying, "No, I don't want this in my body. I don't want my brain function to be different. I don't want to be impaired. I don't want to be slurring my words or someone take advantage of me in a way, in a way that I can't control my system." So the biggest thing is to remember that you have the right to make your own decisions as young people, and parents, share those things with your kids, because drugs are really real, it's relevant, and kids can be using things that you never even thought, putting things on their tongue, the different stickers and all of that. And so the biggest thing is, don't try to be accepted. Be your own person. You're all unique, you're creative, you're smart, and you have great purpose. So remember that when someone is offering you something that may not be in your best interest, and make a good decision, because that one decision that you make will actually help save your life so that you can have a better life the next day.
I also would like to add that I have seen the effects of people trying to self-medicate. So it's not necessarily that, in some, in some situations, it's not necessarily that people are attracted to the drugs, it's that they are trying to satisfy some type of need. And so it's important to talk to your kids, and kids, it's important to talk to your parents about what you're experiencing, if you're experiencing a lot of anxiety, or if you're experiencing sadness. Sometimes there are drugs that can help you, as long as you're talking to a practitioner, like a medical health professional, and you're talking to your parents, you might be getting the stuff that you actually need. So there are ways to make sure that if you are self-medicating, you can do, you can fix the problem responsibly with the help of your parents and medical professionals.
Go next. Just to piggyback on what Judge Morris and Councilwoman Riley said, you know, there's scientific evidence to show that drugs kill your brain cells, and there's scientific evidence to show that young people's brains are not fully developed until the age of 25. So that's reason enough to stay away from drugs. However, especially in our communities, we do seem to self-medicate. So don't cave in to peer pressure. As Judge, as Councilwoman Riley said, be your own person, because understand, when you're going somewhere, there are going to be people to try to pull you down, just because they're jealous, because they see something in you, and God has placed something in you to be a leader. So stay away from drugs.
I, I'd just like to add, I think the question was, so that we can refocus, is why is it so popular now? And I think what we're saying, because it's a short-term answer to usually a long-term problem. Immediately, you, you may feel that you have moved to another place, but right after that, you will be somewhere that you've never been before, in a way to try to work your way out of it without a lot of tools. And so today, we're talking about an old problem. It's been a problem, and I would just tell you, if it was anything good about it, we'd all be celebrating it right now, because we have enough evidence in our community about what drugs do. We'd all be here celebrating if it was a good idea. So, short-term solution to a long-term problem.
And I think the second part of the question was, what's our role in, you know, what's our role for you guys? We're all here because we want to educate you. A lot of us up here are criminal judges, so first of all, drugs are illegal, and you're trying to do something with your life, right? You cannot afford to go to jail or prison for some drugs. It's just going to sidetrack you. We don't have time for that. We have other things that we have to do, that you all are excited to do, other interests that you have. The other thing that we see is people that do get sucked into it, they come in through our system for other things. Maybe they start stealing, they lose where they live, they lose relationships, and then they start acting destructive. Maybe they break a window at Walgreens and keep coming to jail because they keep doing that because they're high. People get just sucked in, and it, it breaks them. So we don't want to see that for any of you. We want to encourage you to do the good things that y'all are inspired to do: music, studies, school, working, whatever y'all want to do. All that is going to be a distraction, and it'll mess with you, including because it's illegal. We see on the, there's lots of criminal judges up here, and we see lots of lives ruined because of drugs, and we do not want that for you. You also don't really know what's in your drugs, because they are illegal, they're not regulated, so you could think you're taking something, and it's not that, and it messes you up. And then you better hope that there's somebody to take care of you and pick you up really quick. So we wanted to share that part with you guys, too. Did you guys want to say something, too?
Everybody has touched on a lot of great points, and they all look great. I'm just going to touch on something brief. Just, drugs is bad, bad for you, you know? Like I say, you have many situations on why kids and even adults use drugs, but the one thing I want you guys to keep in mind is, nowadays, you don't know what's in the drugs. You know, people mixing drugs, you know, making up drugs, and you don't know what you're taking. You might smoke something, and it can mess you up for life. You know, you can lose your mind, your brain, and it's just a slippery slope once you start taking drugs, because you get addiction, you get hooked on the drugs, and that leads to criminal activity, criminal behavior, and to another point, you doing drugs, you know, support a habit, so now you're doing criminal activity to support that habit. And it just leads to, you know, gets you in bad places, you know? Now you're getting arrested, you'll help, you know, it's bad for your health. I would say, be, be an individual. Don't, don't let people pull you down and influence you on things that you know for yourself, which is not right, and things that can harm you. So surround yourself with good people and someone that's accountability partners, that can actually encourage you to do the right thing. And don't think it's not cool, you know, because a lot of times, we get caught up in what's cool and what's the in-crowd everybody's doing. I want to say, you know, take that plunge to be an individual, to be a leader, and to try to steer your friends and yourself in the positive direction, and that way, you won't find yourself in some of the pitfalls that drugs creates.
Amen to that. Hey, um, how many of you guys are driving? Young people?
How many of them are driving?
Got 18-year-old drivers? One, two, three of you? Okay, okay. So it's my responsible people. Okay, I'm just going to be straight up with you. When you get behind the wheel of that vehicle, and you have passengers in your vehicle, and they decide to bring other things with them inside the vehicle with you, even without your knowledge, and it can be a little bag of weed, it can be a lot of different things. It can be alcohol, pills, you name it, okay? And having those drugs onboard in the vehicle with you, now you being the driver, I guarantee you, once the lights come on, boom, everything changes. This whole game changes. A lot of times, people have stuff on, they lose it. Guess where they lose it to? In your car, on the floorboard, under your seat. Guess who's going to be responsible in the result? Know the people that you're putting in your car. Be tolerant, no, not only, actually, have zero tolerance of none of that mess in your vehicle with you, okay? Because it's not worth it. We have driving under influence, DWIs, we have officers out there looking for people that are either under the influence or driving alcohol at night, or during the day, it depends, okay? And the courts are not playing. They are, they are putting the book set to you. They're, they're really putting it to you. If you get caught driving behind the wheel, under the influence of anything, and don't go out there and hurt somebody, or even kill somebody, it's going to be a, a whole game changer to you. It's going to change your whole life. So for you young drivers, okay, don't be afraid to check your passengers. Don't tolerate that mess, okay? Because you can change your whole life with your driving privileges, because driving is a privilege, not a guarantee. It is a privilege, and it will be taken from you. And you don't need people watching over you, telling when you can drive, or you got to blow this before your car start, all that kind of stuff. So say no to it from the beginning, and stick to it. Dumb bound for your words, stick to it, okay? And don't be afraid to, "Oh, you uncool. Oh, you ain't about that." Well, I can be that. I'm not going to be in jail. Or dead, okay? That's real talk, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your insight. One thing that I heard as a common theme that you all mentioned was self-medicating or coping, and the students actually got to attend a mental health conference not too long ago, and one of the things that was touched on was just the high amount of, a high percentage of young people who are depressed or who struggle with anxiety and even have some suicidal thoughts. And so in relating that back to drugs, one of our students has a question.
Okay, so how does substance use slash abuse affect one's mental health, and does it lead further into depression and anxiety, or does it help ease someone's symptoms of depression and anxiety?
I'll start off with that. So it's interesting, because sometimes you will find that some mental health issues are actually triggered by substance abuse, and we see a lot of people who enter the criminal justice system who may have been dealing with something, and they decided to self-medicate, and then it has literally taken the worst turn in terms of the trajectory of their lives. And now, they're dealing with the dependency of the substance, as well as the mental health, either diagnosis or now issue that they're trying to combat. And so when we talk about, you know, why you shouldn't do drugs, not only does it lead you down a path of, could potentially lead you down a path of maybe committing crimes because of the dependency, but it also could trigger a mental health issue that you weren't probably even prepared to address. And so it's another reason along the long list of reasons why drugs could really just change the trajectory of your life.
And I'd like to add to that, that substance abuse is a diagnosis of mental illness. So it in itself becomes a mental illness if you are misusing or abusing substances. And so I'm from the generation of dare, dare to keep kids off drugs, everybody just say no to drugs. And I just think that it requires now a more nuanced conversation about the drugs and the way to use drugs responsibly, separate from, you know, illegal drugs and just recreational and just playing. There are some drugs that people abuse that could be used safely and prescribed safely from a doctor and managed by a doctor, and those do help your mental health. If you are struggling with anxiety or depression, or, you know, suicidal ideations or psychosis, there are medicines that can be prescribed to you without shame, with your parents, that will help you to manage those feelings and those symptoms so that you don't necessarily have the urge to self-medicate. But if you're just trying to figure it out, if you're just feeling sad and you want something to stop it, most things will stop it. The illegal drugs, the ones that will ruin your life, will stop that for a certain period of time, and then when you come down, or when you have to face the consequences, or you wake up in a jail cell or next to somebody you don't know, then you come down and you're dealing with that, and like Judge Catherine said, and all of the other things. So these serious symptoms that you are feeling, they are valid, if you are sad consistently, if you are, you know, struggling with some mental illness. Those are valid, and you need to talk to your parents so that they can get you to professional care, and you can be responsibly treated.
Can you guys read the question again? Because I want to make sure.
Okay. Um, how does substance use and abuse affect one's mental health, and does it lead further into depression and anxiety, or can it help ease someone's symptoms of depression and anxiety?
Yes, further into depression. So it's co-occurring. So you'll have substance use disorder, and then depression, and then the therapist has to decide which one they're going to have to deal with first, okay? That's why we have the Mental Health Symposium here at Bethel and other churches, so we can drive out that stigma, okay? It's a real thing. We all have experienced that collective trauma, COVID. For some of us, it really, really mentally affected us. For some of us, it didn't. And so this, this is really directed towards the parents, especially minority parents. We have to move from the mindset of coming to therapy is crazy. First, we have to deal with those things. We have to deal with the truth. If you look throughout the Bible, you will see people dealing with mental health issues. So what's happening, like the young lady asked. This is not on YouTube, is it? Okay. It will be.
Whatever y'all say, this is being recorded.
Okay. Well, anyway, and so, okay, so anyway, so parents, a lot of, some kids are using drugs, not in all cases, to deal with a lot of things: school, grades, 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 grades. I wish I could, I was gonna, I'm gonna get me a shirt, and on the back of the shirt is going to say, "There are more than grades." And a majority of my, my clients that I serve are adolescents, they're all saying the same thing. And I'm thinking, they all can't live in the same house, they all can't have the same dad, they all can't have the same mom. I'm not saying it's a parent's fault, because I don't believe in saying that, because if I blame you, I got to blame your mom and your dad. Then I got to blame their mom and their dad. So I don't play the blame game, because it's not effective. So to answer the question, yes, but it's the environment to help them get through that. Number one, mental health services, it does help. We don't just sit in there, and they don't just come in my office and talk. We have practice work. They have to do their work, and when they come back to me, I say, "Tell me what you did." And if they can't tell me after so many times, I tell them, "Maybe this is not a good fit. You have to do the work." Therapists are not sitting there just listening to people talk anymore, because we will burn out. And I have had some clients, I've said, "It's not working. You come back and let me know." So these kids are using drugs, drugs to mask, to deal with depression, to deal with the pressure of grades, what's, what's my career going to be, things of that nature. How can you, as a parent, show up? Number one, you got to check yourself. Your unresolved issues and your leftover issues, you got to deal with that first, because it is going to affect, it's going to affect your child. You got to look at you first. I'm not saying it's your fault. And as you're working on you, then work on that relationship. These kids want us. We need to attune with our children. I'm not saying be your child's friend. They don't really want to be your friend, anyway. Just sit and listen actively. Just listen to them. And be mindful of the shaming, of the shaming. So I may have gone a little deep in my answer to the question, but it all connects. It all connects. They want something simple, they need something simple, and that's us. They want to connect with us. They don't want to be your friend, trust me, they don't. But they want a connect, a tuning, and so that's what I focus on. I focus on parent-child relationship a lot, and that's what I have to go and teach parents when their child is dealing with a mental illness, so we won't have to go to drugs. Use drugs as a way to mask and deal with those, those tough emotions, those tough feelings.
Thank you, Sister Limbrick. Thank you for answering that question for us.
I think Caitlin is actually going to...
So, yeah...
So, um, yeah, so for you guys, so why do you think teenagers use drugs to help them cope with their issues?
So me personally, I think teenagers like use drugs and drink alcohol for like maybe popularity or to, well, like they're depressed or something?
Okay, uh, does anybody else have an answer right here?
I think another reason why student or kids, uh, they use drugs and alcohol to cope with their feelings or whatever, uh, because they don't want to deal with their emotions or what they're going through. So they take a substance, they take drugs or do something else that they don't deal with their emotions. Which is why they keep going down that tunnel of um depression and sadness and everything that they're going through. And they won't deal with the emotions cuz they want something else to take away from it.
How would you handle it? Or how would you help one of your friends handle it?
To ask them if they wanna speak about it. Try different methods to um speak with them about their situation and try something else other than alcohol or uh drugs. So speaking about it or praying with them or trying other things. Uh, healthy, healthy habits to, to create. Thank you.
May I pose a question? Um, one of the students or young, young adults in the room, if, if you'd like to answer this, if you were, i- if you've been approached about using drugs or, you know, someone saying try this because it'll help you calm your nerves or it'll help you kinda ease off the edge or whatever the case may be. Or you've tried to steal or sneak your parents' medication or whatever the case may be. If you were able to overcome that, can you share how you were able to kinda overcome that or get through that? Or did somebody help you with that? One of the kids, kids. Don't be, okay, go ahead. We got one over there too.
So being at a young adult and being at a university, everyone is trying to do drugs and alcohol and everything. Um, and people have been presented like, ooh, take this, you know? And I'm just like, no, I'm not doing that. And the reason why I don't do it is because first off, I have amazing parents that taught me not to do drugs and not to do alcohol. Because obviously it's not healthy for your body. And the other reason is because um I've seen how it affected other people, like in family or, or other people out in the world. I've seen what drugs have done to people. And I'm, I don't wanna be a stere- a stereotype. I don't wanna be a part of that, um, a part of that group that have done drugs and they have gone downhill as well. So I guess it's just being sta- standing firm into your beliefs.
I was gonna add on to that real quick. Um, I, I agree with that. It's more of a, of a want, like you have to want to not to do it, like want to not do it. So I mean, like, you know, it's partly who you put yourself around. You know, if you have good friends or whatever who are also not doing it, you have to, you know, if you're, if you're around your friend and she's smoking every day, you're gonna want to smoke too. So it's just like, you have to make yourself want, not want that. And who was that?
Before moving on, did you all have anything else you all wanted to pose to the students? That's a really uh good thing and thank you for getting them talking and answering questions. Um, well, one thing too I heard um you all say was seek help. Um, and I know sometimes the students kinda may not know where to go or they may feel, maybe I have a financial need or there's already a financial strain on my family. How can I afford to seek help? Um, so what kind of programs, whether within the city, through special counseling offices, through the police department, um, through the court system? What kind of services can students receive for free or little to no cost to where they can get the help that they need and not feel, have that extra burden of a financial um struggle tacked onto that?
Well, first of all, here at Bethel's Family, if you, even if you're not a member here, we're still, we still welcome all um kids to come. So that's one of the resources. Um, Walter, August, the mentoring program. So start with your resources at church, school, community. Church, school, community. Look at those. Yes, you might not um be able to go to therapy and that's fine. I'm not saying everybody needs to go to therapy. What I am saying is that you need to connect with your resources and utilize those resources. This room should be filled with teenagers cuz we have a big church. So we have to start advertising as well. When we hear things about what's going on here at Bethel for the kids, we have to start advertising so we can bring them in so they can be informed.
Somebody said they went to Bel Air, but I know um at Lamar, they have um emotional assistance. And like you can just kinda click a QR code and get somebody to talk to. And anytime during school and you can go and talk to people or you can just take a little break, take a load off. My kid goes to Carnegie and um it, it's a demanding school and she has not had this type of intense demands on her. So this is me as a parent. When she was telling me, when she's coming home crying, I can't do it, I can't do it. I'm like, toughen up. This is me as a parent, this is this year, this school year that's been in session, not less than two months. Toughen up. And then I heard one of the seniors at the school kill themselves. And I had to check myself because my kid is coming to me and saying, I'm, I'm hurting. I'm overwhelmed. I am having a hard time. This is, this is hard for me. And all I could think is, toughen up. And that was my trauma, my childhood, you know, you, you just figure it out. You just raw dog your mental health. You just, you just do it and hush and stop complaining. That's not where we are now. That's not the culture. Your parents, the people, your grownups, the people who care about you understand the responsibility of making sure that you're a whole person when you leave. Not just a smart person. And I certainly would prefer to have a child making seeds than one who is struggling to stay alive. And so when I say, talk to your parents, even if they don't understand, I, and I, I pray that my daughter doesn't get deterred in the future from speaking to me because of the way I reacted, because I immediately understood that I handled that wrong. And so I appreciate when the counselor is saying the parent-child relationship, fixing your own stuff. Sometimes your parents may not understand that you're telling them, keep telling them because above all, they love you and above all, they want you to be healthy and whole. And so keep coming with your issues, keep, even if it doesn't seem like I'm depressed, I'm anxious. Maybe it sounds like, I feel like I can't do anything right. Or I can't get these grades, or I'm never gonna get into college, or everybody gets better grades than me. It seems so easy. It's very, it's very easy for us all to like kinda succumb to imposter syndrome. I'm forty-two years old. I work in a courthouse that I have practiced in my entire adult life. And every morning I wonder, are these people think I'm dumb? Every morning. And so if that's how you feel, it's valid. They might think it, they probably don't. You're definitely not. I definitely am not. But we are dealing with our own stuff that we have just kinda indoctrinated ourselves or been indoctrinated. And so if it's hard for you to manage, talk to your parents, they love you. Or talk to your grownup, or talk to a grownup you trust.
Real quick.
I have a, oh, go ahead.
First of all, oh my God, thank you for saying that, what you said. She said, what I said at first, it wasn't right. But I came back and corrected that. Sometimes it's not what you do at the beginning, parent, but what you do at the end. Hey, I miss, you know, I dropped the ball on that. Come on, let's work on that together. So thank you for sharing that.
I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to bring the question back to y'all. If you're having a hard time, maybe being tempted with drugs, maybe dabbling or just going through a crisis, what, where do you go? What, who do you have to go to? What resources do you know that you have as your options?
So like, if I'm going through a hard time like at school or like with bullying and stuff, uh, I usually go to my mom or dad or siblings or friends or stuff. Uh, cuz those are the people I trust the most, like the people who are in my inner circle. So I would like just go to my pa- I go to my parents the most, so.
If I have a hard time at school, I will go to the principal for help or I'll go to my mom or my dad.
Usually I would just go to my parents, my sisters or uh God. And like remember like his words and everything and what he says, like when I start feeling anxious or I start wor- I start worrying and everything. But I will go to those top three, God, my parents and uh my sisters. Cuz they'll usually, they always lead me back to God when it comes to anything, if I feel anxious or anything.
Um, I'll go, so I actually go to my, my best friend because I do tell her everything. Um, she will also help hold me accountable if I to like tell her like, hey, like make sure I don't do this or hey, make sure I do that. So um I go to her and I'm like, okay, you know, I'm trying to stop doing this, trying to stop eating so much sugar. Make sure I don't do it, hold me accountable. And she does, like she makes sure, she's like, hey, like you said it, I'm not gonna let you do it. So um, even your friends, yeah.
What about these young men in the front row over here and over here? Where do you guys go when you're having a hard time? Or where do you know you can go if you're having a hard time?
I, I usually just um go to my friends cuz like I trust them and they understand everything.
I usually go to like a counselor or like a principal or like basically anyone that I trust really.
And also like teachers at my school, like that I've built that close, you know, connection with. Like, hey, you know, I'm struggling with this and, you know, some things it's just like, you know, some things they'll obviously have to report if it's, you know, danger to my life. But most of the things, it's just like, you know, my dog died last week and they're there, you know, they helped me. So um also like those teachers that you're close, that you're close to, don't be afraid to go to them.
It sounds like y'all all have it down as to who y'all go to. So when people come to you, your, your friends come to you because they can't come to their parents. How do you manage that? Do you, do you share your parents and your trusted grownups with them? Do you suggest to them that they talk to their parents? Do you walk them to the counselor's office? What do y'all, what do y'all do? And if y'all don't do anything, what are you gonna do starting Monday?
So like technically, uh, if my friend like comes to me, I'll ask her like, did you tell your parents about this? And if she says no, I'll be like, well, you should tell your parents about this. And our counselor says, well, state, what goes in our office stays in our office. So I would suggest she go there if like you don't want anyone to know. And like she'll be like, thank you for giving me the advice. And probably she'll follow it cuz most, uh, sometimes she doesn't follow my advice and she does what she wants to do.
Um, if like a friend need help with anything or going through anything, like I've been through some stuff and seen some stuff. So if I've been through it, I give them the best advice I could give them or if it's too much for me to handle or I feel like it's really dangerous, I go to a parent or go to my mom and tell them like, I need any help.
Yeah, to add on to that, I had to learn that I can't deal with my problems and other people's. So um, a lot of times I had to tell an adult, like, hey, you know, I was, I was told this, but I can't, I can't handle that, so.
I'd like to share something um from the adult perspective. Uh, one thing that I learned in being a mother is, one, I couldn't raise my kids the way that I was raised uh because of the trauma, the non-support, the lack of relationship. And so um we haven't really talked about a whole lot of it today, but your Bible are your instructions in how we raise kids. And it's not really even raising them, it's training them up in the way that they should go. Um, one, one of the things that my kids helped me to be the best mom that I could be for them and their dad is we gave them open space to communicate with us. We allowed them to share things with us even when it was hard. We didn't interrupt, we didn't talk, we didn't question, we listened. In our generation of parents nowadays, that's really hard. Because one, we wanna protect our kids, one, we wanna get in there and save them and then we wanna scold them because they did something wrong or we're scared that their friends are gonna be a bad influence over them. And so with us as parents, we have to remember to not just wait for our kids um to come and talk to us, but go and check on them. And don't ask, how are you doing? Cuz that's an open-ended question, it's a yes or no. Go and ask them specific questions. Hey, how are you managing, you know, math class? You know, are things going, how are things going with your friends? You know, are you having any troubles? Has anybody talked to you about, you know, anything that may not be a good fit for you? Really have an intentional conversation with them. So that, so they understand you really care about more than just grades. You care more about than just boyfriend, girlfriend, that stuff. You really kinda care about the inner person as they are and as they try to travel this road called life that we've already kinda figured out. They are young, they're impressionable, they're going through so much more than we actually went through, believe it or not. And those that are, are raising their grandkids or their nieces and their nephews, they really need you to be a person in their life that they can look to, to sustain them, to support them and to help them navigate this road. So one thing that I always tell a lot of my parents that I mentor and their kids is, remember, these are human beings. They're not just kids. They're not just, they're human beings. They have feelings, they have thoughts, they have struggles and they go through stuff. And in order for you to get to the core of what they're going through, you have to have a relationship. That's what God does with us. He sent us Jesus Christ so that we can have a relationship with God. Our kids are the same way. They wanna have relationships with us. They wanna come and talk to us, share intimate things with you without you judging. And as much as you don't wanna hear some of this stuff, it's okay to listen. Cringe up, suck up the butterflies and the frogs jumping around in your stomach and what you're listening to and just listen. Watch your facial expressions because they respond to that, they respond to body language. And help your child know that they can trust you with whatever they bring to you. And when they bring that to you, keep that to yourself. Don't talk to your adult friends about your kids' problems. Don't post that on social media, that is inappropriate. Do not talk about breaking your child's confidence in you when you are going and sharing that. And if you have to talk to the dad or the mom or something, ask your child, hey, would you be okay if I talked to dad about this? You know, and kinda bring him in. And if they say no, you gotta keep it no, you know? And you just tell dad, hey, pray for Sarah, pray for Johnny, Sequincha, whatever her name, her name and his name is. You know, respect that. Because that's how you're gonna get to the core of what really goes on with your kids. And then ask your child, and be, be okay with this. Ask your child, are you, am I someone that you can really talk to and confide in? And if they say, well, no, not really, say, well, how can I be better? How can I be a better parent to you? Because mamas and daddies are the people that just give birth to the kids. A parent is a responsibility and an obligation to God with requirements, responsibilities and all sorts of obligations. That's what we're supposed to be as godly people, parents. Not mommy and daddy, that's just what they call us. We've gotta be parents to train them up in the way that it should go so that when they're grown, they won't part from that. Instilling the Bible scriptures, not beating them over their head, not dragging them to church, but encouraging them to come to build relationships with their church, but encouraging them to come to build relationships with their friends and fellow people that believe the same thing that they're gonna believe and give them hope. And so I really want to encourage the parents and the adults in the room to be mindful how we interact with these young people. I mentored hundreds of kids in Fort Bend County, mainly in Fort Bend ISD schools. And one of the things, all these kids, they're all grown now, they got, they're married with kids and families and careers. And one of the things that they came back and shared with me is, thank you for always being open to listen to the tough stuff and giving us sound information and direction, not your opinion, not how it was when you grew up, but giving sound direction and then helping me navigate how to make my own decisions. We've got to help our kids to be independent thinkers, to be disciplined in how they make those decisions and to understand the blessings and the consequences of their choices. So let's be really good, godly parents and represent what God would have us to do, because when we're older, these are the leaders. These are the future judges and council people and mental health specialists. So we gotta take care of them now so they can take care of us later.
Real quick, so, um, I'm gonna get started again on that once a month where we're on a call, Zoom call, parent call for the PAC, uh, organization here at Bethel. And I'm glad you said what you said. Um, grace-based parenting. We're gonna talk about how to give our children grace. When we found out, find out they have smoked some weed. How we give them grace? Cause they, they need grace. We can, we easily can give other people grace, but our own is very difficult. There, there is even a book called Grace-filled Marriage. But I'm gonna be talking about grace, uh, grace-based parenting. So we're gonna, hopefully we'll resume that in, um, November, I think the first Sunday, uh, five, five-thirty to six-thirty on a call, very short, uh, but that's, that's what we're gonna focus on.
Um, I wanted to add what you were talking, something to what you were talking about. Became, before I became a licensed drug counselor, I was an ordained minister. And I lived the life of drug addiction before I became a minister. And the good Lord got me out of all that mess. But as soon as he got me out of the mess, he started putting desires in my heart to work in public schools. And I'm going like, why do you want me in the schools for God? And then later on, I found out that God is missing from our schools. They used to have God in our schools a long time ago. I'm old enough to remember, we used to have prayer and Bible reading when I was a kid in, in school. So once they took all that out, that's when I noticed that all this bad stuff started coming in. When you remove light, darkness will come in. So then through the years, I understood, uh, on my, on my resume, I had ordained minister under and licensed chemical, chemical dependency counselor. So I, I discovered that a lot of these kids, when I was counseling them, they would, they was asking me, how come we don't hear stuff like this from everybody else? We, even during our probation, when I was working with them for three years, I would go to all the Cubs and talk to the kids, share my testimony, how God got me. Mister, how come nobody tells us about this? But I, I guarantee you, God, what you're talking about, if we put them back with, with the, the rest of the people that work with the kids in other professions, God is what's missing right now. And that will make the rest of the work that everybody else is doing complete. The spiritual component has been missing for a long time. And I guarantee you, right now, I just hooked up with an organization called the National Schools of Chaplains. Legis, legislation in the state of Texas has just approved that chaplains can come and work in our public schools and get paid by some of the funding that the schools have. So I think this is very important that we cannot leave God out of the equation. And, uh, I want to encourage everybody that if you're in a school district, working in school districts, there's a lot of drug prevention in Fort Bend County Council on Drugs and Alcohol, the Houston Council on Drugs and Alcohol. There's a lot of people that can work doing the drug and alcohol and the mental health departments, but we must include God. And if you guys work anywhere close to people that, responsible, uh, uh, school councils, if they can bring in these chaplains, cause they're available. And if you go to the, the National Schools of Chaplains, they're available for all the school districts right now. Thank you.
I would like to say something. When I was growing up, we had prayer in school, we also got whippings in school. And I would get a whipping at home for getting a whipping at school. So I had double whippings. But what I want to say is honesty and integrity go a long way. Put God first, always, because what you are living under, you young people, is a lot of pressure, because we weren't inundated with social media like you are. And they didn't have cursing on regular TV like they do. You could, you, you don't, or the radio, you could only get that on cable. And my parents had, uh, what is that? Uh, parental guidance on, uh, television. So honesty and integrity is what I want to say, to keep in your heart and to display that, because it'll show. And also grace and mercy. And grace and mercy is a two-way street with your parents. I love hearing that you said you'll go to your parents. But remember, when we had our kids, there's no parental handbook on how to raise kids. So parents do make mistakes. And it's okay, just like you make mistakes. I'm sure none of us are perfect. So it's a two-way street. Grace and mercy, honesty and integrity, and God first. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. So what I'm hearing is that there are resources for our students that they just need to access them. So whether you guys are at school, and also you all mentioned a big push for them to talk to their parents and that they may not get it right the first time, but still come back around so that they can get it right the second time. Um, but we want to thank you all so much. We have come to the end of our program. Um, the youth council has been working so hard on gathering research and, um, putting all of this together. So if you all would please leave your information so that the council can have an opportunity to ask you the rest of their questions and speak to you more about, um, the law and how that, um, the drugs and alcohol affect them and how that comes in terms with the law, um, and things of that nature. Um, but we do have Kalen, who's gonna give some closing remarks, and she has some things to hand out to you all.
Okay, so once again, we would like to thank you all for attending and participating in the first annual Drug Free Community Town Hall meeting. A special thank you to our guest speaker, Dr. Reginald Brown, our breakout session leader, Sister Limbrick and Mr. Ramirez, Judge Lori Chambers Gray and Judge Catherine Thomas. Uh, we would also like to thank our experts, panelists. Um, I'm sorry if I don't know how to say your names. Okay. Uh, Judge Italia. Okay. Judge Maria, Judge Melissa Moore, Councilwoman Monica Riley and Sister Kathy Carey, who I don't think made it today. Um, another special thank you to Reverend Ford, my daddy. And the One Church at Bethel's Family Student Ministry for helping this event come to reality. Um, now, and after this, or you wanna close this in prayer now?
I'll close this in prayer and then you can, they have something for you all. And I'll go ahead and close this in prayer. Oh, and a thank you to Sister Kristen, she didn't pay her support. Thank you all for attending, but let's go to God in prayer. Um, God, we just thank you so much, God, for all that you're doing so far, Father God, for us and all that you've continued to do for us. God, I thank you for each and every student that was here today, God, every parent that was here, every family that was represented, Father God. I just pray that some seeds were planted in the students' hearts, God, and as well as the parents' hearts, Father God, so that we would learn to make good choices, Father God, and that we would be light in those dark places, Father God. Give the students and the parents the courage to be light in dark places, Father God, and to, um, to step in the gap when their friends have issues, Father God, and give them the courage to seek help if they needed, Father God. Thank you for your many blessings over our lives, Father God. We just ask all of these things in your son's Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to just say thank you to these two young ladies, uh, these ladies, give them a round of applause. Cause we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for their vision, their hearts and the leaders and people that, um, helped put this together. So I just want to say thank y'all so much for inviting us all and posing these questions. I'll be here a little bit after, so if you have questions for me, uh, please invite us back on, um, Bible Study Days, or if y'all do this with just your youth groups and stuff, we don't have to be all official. And we can probably even share some more intimate testimonies, uh, with you guys as well. I'm always happy to share my, my truths, cause it ain't always been this, this, this fly up here, okay? It was rough back in the day, but thank y'all again.
Okay, so also before we start on, um, certificates. Okay, before we start on that certificate, I also want to say thank you to the other councilmen, uh, members. We have Serenity and Trinity and here somewhere. Uh, we also have Sister Onar and her plus one. And we have, uh, my mom, Sister For, she's over there. Doctor Dee, who got a lot of these people up here today. And Doctor Hill, you're not forgotten. Okay, so, uh, the first certificate we have goes to Judge Melissa Morris. Yes, please. Um, Officer Mays. Officer Mays, he's right there. Judge Jackson, Maria Jackson. She's coming down. Judge Natalia. Doctor Dorsey. Councilwoman Monica Riley. Sister Angela Limbrick. Judge Catherine Thomas. Officer Bro. And it's his birthday. Happy twenty-first birthday. And Mr. Ramirez. Did I get all the, um, oh, and Doctor Dorsey? Where did it, Doctor Dorsey? Oh, she's right there. She passed an August, we'll catch you. Yes. And thank you again for all coming. And, uh, here's Reverend Ford.
All right, um, thank you all again for being here. Sister Kristen has already prayed, it's out. I just want to make a couple of brief announcements. Um, I, I do want to give a plug for Crossroads Mentoring, because, um, for parents and for people in the body of Christ, what does mentoring look like? Discipleship. What does mentoring look like in the world? Free counseling. So if you are a parent and you know, you believe, you want your kid to be counseled, uh, you want your kid to be mentored, and who doesn't as a parent want their kid to be mentored? Uh, I invite you to stop by the table and talk with Reverend Walter. Um, and I also want to put in a plug, is he still here? Uh, Deacon Fletcher is teaching a class for young people called Keeping It Real. And that class will start on, uh, Sunday, the twenty-ninth, it'll be at one o'clock in room one hundred. Um, and it's a, it's an education and awareness class. So one of the things that we try to do at Bethel's, uh, student ministry is we try to, uh, give kids everything that they need to make good choices and good decisions when it comes to their life, their future. Um, and that Keeping It Real class is a class for young people, uh, in that, uh, in that vein. So it'll be at one o'clock, uh, beginning on the twenty-ninth of October. Uh, you can call me for more information, we'll get you registered for the class. Uh, if you sign up for counseling as a, I'm sorry, mentoring as a young person, uh, it is through Crossroads Mentoring. So, um, those, uh, it's one of the classes that the Crossroads, um, kids who are being mentored have, uh, are required to take. So, um, if you have any questions about anything that went on here, uh, please feel free to reach out for me, or if there's anything that we can do as a ministry to, um, come alongside you as a young person or you as a, as a parent, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Six oh nine eight seven six three eight five five. All right, uh, thank y'all, and I think we're gonna get a, a picture. Uh, thank y'all, God bless y'all, and we see y'all, Lord, if the Lord say the same tomorrow.